I'm going to call this Montclair City Council to order along with the other agencies. And as we fashionably do, we'll begin with the invocation and the pledge allegiance, and I'll have the city clerk announce those individuals.
Okay, tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Josh Matlock of Bethany Baptist Church, and the pledge will be led by Councilmember Johnston.
Please stand.
Dear Father, and Savior, thank you for the common praises that we all receive. We thank you for the air in our lungs that people breathe. Thank you for our lives. And the ability we have to reason, and we thank you for our hearts and the ability we have to love. And Lord, I pray for this council, that they would be able to use all these things tonight in their meeting, that they can use these things to be a blessing to our city as they consider many things and weigh many things. We pray that they would act in just and honorable ways for this community. We pray you bless them, that you bless this meeting. We pray that you would bless this city. We pray your blessing on all those who are working in this city to actively help improve this place to be a safer, more loving of city, that it glorifies you, God, and all these things. And so, we pray for our city. And Lord, tonight, too, thank you for our police department, and I want to thank you for the many years of service that Pipersky gave us, and we thank you for the blessing that he is here tonight, and for his retirement, and we pray that you continue to bless him in his retirement. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please place your hand over your heart and join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we add roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Ru.
Present.
Mayor DuTrey.
Present.
Thank you.
This evening, we have two presentations, and the first presentation is part of our COVID-19 Community Recognition Award. And tonight, it's my pleasure to recognize another healthcare provider here in Montclair that has gone above and beyond to assist our community during the COVID-19 pandemic. Health Services Alliance is a community clinic that provides comprehensive medical care to all individuals and families, including low-income and non-insured patients here in Montclair and the surrounding communities. Over last year and a half, Home Services has provided over 5,000 COVID vaccinations for its patients, community members, school districts, employees. In addition, Health Services Alliance has also provided approximately 2,500 COVID tests. In fact, they helped our employees who needed to be tested last December and quickly set up a drive-through testing for over 30 of our city staff members. We are very appreciative of the assistance of Health Services Alliance. We are very appreciative of our assistance of Health Services Alliance provided our employees and the community at large with COVID-19 vaccines and testing. Thank you for providing this health care to our community during this unprecedented pandemic. This evening, we have the pleasure of having here the CEO of Health Alliance. I think we all know who he is, Dr. James Lally. And then, I believe, you also have your chief health...
I'm sorry, Dr. Lavis is the chief medical officer.
Chief medical officer. So, I think what I'm going to do is, everybody knows Dr. Lally, let's have everybody come down here to the bottom, the dais. We'll take it off in a second for pictures. You're okay, yours there it is. But nevertheless, Dr. Lally, you've done a lot of wonderful things here in the city of Montclair for many years, and during these last 18 months, I don't have to say that this was a very difficult year here in Montclair and, of course, throughout the community. And you stepped up. You took your clinic here in Montclair on corner San Bernardino in Fremont. You opened it up to do the vaccinations, to do the testing, and to really go out of the way to develop a healthy community. That's what we need, and that's what you're about. You're about giving back to the Montclair community and the Montclair region. So, on behalf of the Montclair City Council, myself, thank you very much for what you've done and continue to do for this community.
Thanks very much.
All right, one, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Any more pictures?
Good? Yeah?
There you are. And I will give you that now. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Back in 1987, when I got here, at the school, there was a talk of a clinic over here, and so I came over and volunteered. And then, in '89, Marcia showed up. Am I off a little bit? Okay. So, anyway, Marcia Richter has been as much of the part of our success and our growth here as anyone has. We've had a night clinic for years and years and years. In 2016, I was making some changes in my life, and I decided that we would buy the building that was a family planning building, and with the city's instruction and Mr. Diaz's guidance, we tore it down and built a new facility. And then, since then, it's just been on the up. This is a great community. I owe this community a lot because it gave me my start, but more importantly, the people here are just good, solid citizens, and I appreciate that, whether it's one of the officers pulling me over for rolling through a stop sign. He was so nice that morning that I even wrote to the chief and thanked him because, really, you know, we all get sloppy in our ways of doing things, and I still paid the ticket, so it wasn't an issue there. But to the fact that if we need anything, Mr. Starr's always been available to help us. So, I want to thank the council again, and certainly anything else we can do. We're doing boosters, in case anyone's interested, we can work that out for you. I believe Moderna was approved. It depends what day of the week it is, but right now, Moderna has approved for a third for those that are at risk, and certainly, we have it available. So, thanks again, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would note that, Dr. Lally, I think every month, you provide the senior center, when they were in service, of course, a birthday cake every month. I believe you're responsible for a birthday cake every month. And I actually like to recognize Marcia Richter because today's her birthday. Okay, the next presentation, I'll give that to the city manager.
I forgot. Happy birthday, Marcia. Monica, Monica Harida, if you will please come up. Come on down, as they say. You can speak afterwards, should you want to. Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, fellow employees, and Montclair community, I am pleased and honored, you might want to face the audience, I am pleased and honored to formally... Yeah, 180, there you go. And honored to formally introduce to you Montclair's newest Public Works Director, Monica Harida. This is, of course, not your first introduction to Monica. You heard from her earlier this evening during the workshop regarding infrastructure projects. Monica is a native to Bolivia and has lived locally in California since 1979. While she has not confirmed nor denied it, the story is that Monica is the 103rd cousin, 10 generations removed, of Simon Bolivar, the father of Bolivia.
Oh, okay. Congratulations.
It is also reported that as a young girl, Monica visited neighboring Argentina and attended singing classes with Eva Peron. In fact, Monica would have you believe that she wrote the line, "Don't cry for me, Argentina." So, let's hear it, Monica, sing it. Early in her academic life, Monica showed promise as a future civil engineer by achieving recognition in Pomona High School's MESA program, scoring high in mathematics, engineering, and science. Also while attending Pomona High, Monica was awarded a student internship at Pasadena's Jet Propulsion Laboratory, where, according to rumors started right here, she personally designed the first space shuttle orbiter vehicle, Enterprise, as part of a one-hour space vehicle architectural design class. After designing the orbiter vehicle, Monica went on to obtain her bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Cal Poly Pomona. During her undergraduate years, Monica was actively involved in Cal Poly's Minority Engineering Program and Society of Hispanics in Science and Engineering. After graduating from Cal Poly, Monica worked for the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power for over five years, leading the hydraulic modeling group. However, finding herself knee-deep in water, Monica, like water passing under the bridge, put her water industry years behind her and joined the city of Santa Clarita for a 22-year period of municipal service. In Santa Clarita, Monica managed special district programs, worked in development services, and completed a number of capital improvement projects, experiences that give her excellent background as she prepares to take on more than $45 million in infrastructure projects for the city of Montclair. In 2011, Monica completed her graduate studies in public administration at Cal State Northridge. In 2017, she was appointed Assistant City Engineer in the city of West Covina, and in 2019, she was hired as Public Works Director, City Engineer for the city of Pico Rivera. Montclair, of course, stole her from Pico Rivera and brought her to us here in 2021. In 2017, Monica was appointed Assistant... I'm sorry. Combined, Monica has over 30 years of experience in the design, construction, and management of public works projects and programs. In addition, her experience includes supervising engineering, field, and support staff, managing five-year capital improvement programs, and overseeing water service operations. Monica is a member of the American Public Works Association and has been involved in four American Public Works Association Best Award projects. Monica is also the proud mother of three children, Esteban, Veronica, and Mary Cruz. Veronica and Mary Cruz are with us in the audience this evening, sitting in the back row. Now, listen to this. Esteban holds a degree in criminal justice, and somehow, he transitioned that degree to private sector work as a civil engineer designer. I don't get it, but I can see Robert Abels, our chief of police, planning his next career move right now. Veronica graduated from Cal Poly Pomona with an architectural degree, and Mary Cruz graduated this year from Cal Poly Pomona with a degree in biotechnology with a minor in chemistry. In her leisure, Monica enjoys reading, hiking, dancing, cycling, swimming, and traveling. But always dear to Monica's heart is her passion and devotion to her role as public servant, and believe me, we will tap that eagerly and generously. Honorable Mayor and City Council, I introduce Monica Harida. Now, Monica, if you have some words you want to say.
Well, thank you so much for that nice introduction. I don't know if I remember all those earlier stories of my life, but thank you for the reminder. I just want to thank you, Mr. City Manager, and for giving me this opportunity to serve the residents of Montclair. I was going back to Santa Clarita for some reason, and I live very close to this community. A lot of my shopping and walking is in Montclair, actually, so I'm very excited to be part of this team. So far, it's been amazing the last month and a half, and I look forward to working with each and every one of the council members, and it's just I'm really excited to be here, and I hope to deliver $45 million worth of projects. I'm passionate about public works and construction, and I'm just thrilled to be here. So, thank you so much.
You're welcome, Monica. Okay, next item is the public comment portion of the agenda, and this is an opportunity for the public to address the city council on items not on the agenda or to request to speak on a consent calendar or a business item on the agenda. Speakers will have five minutes to address the city council under the public comment section of the non-agenda items, and up to five minutes to comment on one or more of the business agenda items. If you're in the audience, please complete a speaker card. You'll find the speaker card in front of the door and place it in the box in the banister, which is right to my right. You'll see it on top of the pillar over here. And if you're on the Zoom, please raise your hand function to request a speak. If you're on the phone, please dial *9 to request a speak. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking any action on any item that is not listed on the agenda. And at this time, I'm going to ask the city clerk if you have any members of the public that wish to speak.
Okay, first, we have Ruby Long from San Bernardino County Kurt Hagman's office.
Okay, how many speakers do we have?
We have five right now in the line.
Five altogether? Okay. Okay.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, I just wanted to announce an event that we're going to be having, we're going to be hosting at our district office in Chino Hills. It's going to be the Veteran Claims Event on November 10th at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., where we'll have county veteran service officers there that can answer any existing questions with existing claims, conduct benefit assessment interviews, complete claim forms and paperwork, and also, we'll be able to issue you a San Bernardino County veteran ID card. It's very important that you do bring your DD form 214, and all services provided will be free of charge. And I'll say it also in Spanish. En noviembre diez vamos a tener un evento en nuestra oficina in Chino Hills para los veteranos donde vamos a dar información de beneficios y servicios y también pueden recibir su tarjeta de identificación como veterano y todos los servicios van a ser gratis pero tienen que traer su forma de DD 214. And that's it on my side, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Rob Pipersky in the audience.
Tonight, I'm coming as a citizen because I'm no longer employed by the city of Montclair because I am retired. City Manager Ed Starr, all the members of the city council, Police Chief Robert Abels, I have tried writing this letter of retirement for some time now, but it has proven extremely difficult. I began my emergency service career working with the Division of Forestry, which is now Cal Fire, and driving ambulance as emergency medical technician back in 1973. I began my law enforcement career in July 1977 with the city of Chino as a reserve police officer. In 1980, I came to the city of Montclair, and that was under Police Chief Roger Moulton, and I believe it was City Manager Milheiser. I came to the city of Montclair 41 years ago as a reserve police officer. On an October 3, 1989, I attended the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Academy to become a full-time police officer. And I can tell you, on my first day of the academy, I sat there, and I came home to my wife at the time, and I said, "How mad are they going to be if I quit?" I mean, it was that difficult, and I just... It was horrible at that time, but I made it through. I have never regretted that decision and appreciate all the opportunities this city has offered me. I am one of the lucky ones, being able to fulfill my childhood dreams of being both a firefighter and a police officer. And truth be told, I have never worked a day in the last 41 years with this city. Do a job you love, and you never have to work a day in your life. I am amazed this city has paid me for this career. I would have done it for free, and in fact, I did do it for free for 13 years. I have worked with many wonderful people with whom I have shared many adventures, stories, and calls for service, but I have never forgotten I served the public and the citizens of Montclair. I have always been grateful for this city for allowing me to be a person and not a number. The city has allowed me to be a police officer, to interact with the public I served, and to enforce the laws making an impact on the community then and into the future. I started this career, and my goal was to be like my heroes, Jim Reed and Pete Malloy, Adam 12. For all you young people, that was a TV show back in the '60s. All of us older folks watched that and loved it. I only ever wanted to be a patrol officer and a field training officer. I did that and have lost track of how many officers I have trained over the years. However, one stands out and has become a great friend and leader. I am proud to say, one of my first trainees is now Chief of Police, Robert Abels. As a patrol officer, I once stopped an 11-year-old kid playing and making mischief up at, I think it was the park, MacArthur Park. He was running across the freeway and throwing rocks. Years later, that person became my boss, and that was Officer, or Lieutenant, Brian Ventura. I have retired, and my last workday was October 4th, and my first day of retirement was October 5th. Although I am retired, it has not sunk in yet, as I still think of this as just my vacation, a two-week vacation, which, by the way, I never really took when I was working patrol. After 41 years of living my childhood dreams and playing cops and robbers, all things must come to an end. At some point in one's life, one needs to grow up, and I need to grow up, and now I need to look for a real job. So, that search begins now. I do not have the words to express my gratitude to everyone I have had the privilege to work with and for. There are too many people that have crossed my path for me to mention. However, I am happy to say, I will cherish these memories till the end of my days. I am truly blessed and lucky to have known the many great and wonderful people over the years. The city of Montclair, the police department, gave me a fantastic tribute on my exit, and they posted it on the webpage. And I used to be tough. I tell everyone, I used to be tough. Nah, not anymore. You know, brings a tear to my eye when I look at those things, you know? But anyway, thank every one of you for the opportunities that you have given me. Thank you.
I just want to pause here for a second, Rob. I want to say thank you behalf of the city council and the people of Montclair, for your many years in public safety here in the city. I know that a lot of many public safety officers don't spend that much time in one city, and you committed to Montclair, not just committed to Montclair patrolling, working here, but also living in Montclair, which is also something that you don't see these days with public officers. I also want to say thank you for all the great ride-alongs you gave me. We went on some pretty wild ride-alongs. I think there's been, if I remember correctly, there were two homicides that I was with you on, two different homicides, and a number of DUI arrests and other things, and red lights, and racing down Central Avenue, and probably 90 miles per hour for a Code 3 call.
Code 2.
Whoa, Code 2 call. So, and then, just a short story, I know that you also pulled over my son, and if you remember that, Christopher, and you asked him, you have two choices, either you can get a ticket, or we can get on the phone right now and call your mom. And he decided to call his mom, and that was funny, kind of a funny story because something's even happened to my wife's sister in Boston. So, thank you very much. Any other comments from councilmembers for Rob?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Rob, I haven't known you as long as John has and others, but I appreciate you giving of your extracurricular time to the city for, I'm not sure if you're still retired from this particular job, but will you still be Santa?
I will definitely do it for Santa Claus.
All right.
And we're hoping that the Haverback Police Association, I believe, I will stay with that.
Okay, well, I know you've made many kids happy by doing that, and those are priceless moments, and they have the pictures to prove it. So, thank you for giving of your time in that regard. It is very much appreciated. Godspeed in your retirement. Enjoy everything that you weren't able to do while you were on work. I'm sure you're going to take thousands of pictures, like you already have a million of as it is, but continue doing that, but we'll see you around, I'm sure.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Pipersky, I want to, we've talked about your police career and your fire career, but there was something critically important that you did for the city that we haven't talked about, and that's about how you did the safety program. I remember you taking me to the EOC to let me know how things would go if there was a disaster and where residents should go, and you knew every question I had, you knew every detail of every answer, and I really appreciate you looking out for the citizens of this community just in case a disaster would happen. So, kudos to you for all your hard work. I'm still going to be calling you, you know. Well, what do we do about this, and what do we do about that? I'm still going to be calling you, so keep your phone on.
Mayor Protem Ru.
You've done an excellent job in this community. I have always heard good things about you from the residents of this town. I think you stand with a tremendous amount of excellence in your dedication to not just your career, your profession, not just the community you live in, not just the community you serve, but indeed, to the world around you. I really will miss your involvement at the police department, the many things you've done, and I could be here for three hours talking about many, many different things in your career, but it says a lot when somebody takes time and not just says, "This is a career, I'm off the clock at this time," but after hours is still continuing to be involved and dedicated, and that's the mark of somebody who is truly involved with humanity. So, Rob, thank you.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes. Rob, I saw the farewell video to you. I watched every second of it, and I will neither confirm nor deny whether I cried, but you definitely deserve the recognition. And I may or may not have been pulled over a few times myself in Montclair. I wish it was by you. You were way more generous than what happened to me, but again, I declare my innocence. And as to the Santa Claus comment, I'm very confused. That's not a funny joke, so maybe we can clarify that later.
Thank you. So, move on to public comments again. Next speaker, please. And I apologize if we took a pause on public comments.
Okay, next is Karina Quijada and Selena Gutierrez.
Hello.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Karina Quijada.
And I'm Selena Gutierrez.
And we're with the City of Montclair Little League. Last season was the Farm 66ers. So, on behalf of our team manager, Coach Ben Lopez, and our head coach, Johnny Arenas, who's not here tonight, and our entire team's kids and their parents, we would like to present Mayor DuTrey with this plaque, thanking him for supporting our team and believing in our kids. Your sponsorship helped us with our end-of-the-year banquet and made it possible for our kids to enjoy a meal, some games, and, right, John's incredible pizza. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
For your commitment to Montclair's youth and our families.
Well, that was very surprising. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Do you guys want some pictures?
Please.
Okay. Take it with the entire city council. I know we're going late. You know, I want to say this, this is not about just myself sponsoring a team, this is about our youth, and I really appreciate what you two do and everybody else does who has volunteers for the Montclair Little League here in Montclair. And yes, we're going to improve Saratoga Park. All right. One. Two. One. All right, thank you. That was a surprise.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Say two more things. Not even. I just wanted to thank Councilman Ben Lopez, but also for my, at least for my son, and I know Karina's son is an amazing coach to our kids, first-time mom with a child who plays sports, and I couldn't have asked for a better, I guess, leader for the kids who my son fights day in and day out to stay on your team. Unfortunately, he's going to have to try out now and can't because he has to go elsewhere, but just wanted to say thank you and that I appreciate you and that I am so grateful for the experiences that you've given my son and my children here in Montclair because we're new here, we're only five years in, so couldn't be any more grateful for you in our lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for your volunteers for our kids. Appreciate it.
Thanks for the kind words.
Okay.
Bruce Kulp.
Bruce Kulp.
Good evening. Just wanted to wish Ms. Richter a happy birthday and also a wonderful thank you for all the work that you do, day in, day out, year in, year out. I know your particular job is a pretty darn tough one, so, you know, thanks for hanging in there day after day doing what you do. I'd also like to thank Mr. Pipersky for his many, many years of service. We'll miss you, I'm sure the city's going to miss you. I know I'll personally miss you out on the streets of safety and, you know, taking care of us residents here in Montclair. I'd like to congratulate, and I can't remember her name, our new Public Works Director, for her new role here, and thank you so much for joining the team. I look forward to visiting one day when it's safer to do so. And, oh, I wanted to see if I could have Item B9 pulled, talk about that one. And lastly, thank you to every City Council member and employee who has masked up today and cares and respects the citizens of this city and their public health. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any more speakers?
We have Carolyn Raft.
Okay. Hello?
Good evening, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Carolyn.
Oh, okay, yes, thank you very much. First of all, I wanted to bring the Council up. As everyone knows, I'm on the vector control, so we had some results up to date and out of the invasive, we've had like, on the services this year, we have had, on the recent month, we've had three in Montclair services that were requested compared to last year at the same time, which was 11 that were requested, and only three have come back positive. So, and they had collected 99 mosquito, numbers of mosquitoes, and that was out of 21 traps that were at nighttime that were collected. So, we are doing so much better this year so far than last year, even with the hot weather. So, and the vector control is putting out more traps, so it looks like, I know in my area here, and I have some other, the people that, board members on the vector control, they're complaining about a lot of mosquitoes in their yards, but here in Montclair, we haven't had very many at all, only three calls, so let's hope and pray it stays that way. I want to congratulate Dr. Lally and appreciate all his service to Montclair and so glad that he did take up his practice here and that we were able to keep him. I also, Officer Pipersky, thank you for your service as well. You are an excellent officer and you are truly, truly going to be missed. Our family loves you and God bless you and I wish you luck on whatever you decide to do in your endeavors. So, but stay active, stay involved and show, keep showing up so often so we can get to see your face, your handsome face and get to hear about what you're doing in your life, okay? So, thank you. That's all I have, this CD.
Thank you.
All right, and that's it.
That's it. Next item is consent calendar. I know there's a request to discuss B9. Is your, anybody on my left want to move and remove an item from the consent calendar?
No.
No? Anybody on my right?
Mr. Mayor, for just purpose of three quick comments, C like Charlie 2, 3, and 4.
Charlie 2, Charlie 3, and Charlie 4. Okay. All right, so on C4, which is the Metro Honda Agreement, I need to recuse myself since I received the contribution that exceeded, what the amount was that again, Diane? $520, I will be withdrawing myself and I'll be handing over the meeting to the Mayor Protem for this portion for that one item there. So, what we'll do is, I think we'll start with B9 and I'll ask Mr. Bruce Kulp to speak on B9.
Hi. Okay, just wanted to talk about the Pacific Electric Trail one more time. I know I see it on this item and, you know, it's always up for a vote, so I just want to voice my support. You know, it's, it's used. A couple of weeks ago, we even had a member of another city, Ms. Jones, attend the meeting. So, as you can see, the importance of the Pacific Electric Trail to many communities throughout this west end of San Bernardino County. It serves many, many residents throughout this county and our portion of it is just as important as any other portion of this Pacific Electric Trail. Having that bridge replaced in a timely manner and, you know, proving those funds for it makes a better community all around. It brings people into Montclair, it brings, allows Montclair residents health and, you know, better health through exercise and it's an open parks type of area. It gets them to our Montclair Transit Center. And so, just wanted to voice my support once again and hopefully you got through the funding for that and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to note on C9, B9 on the Pacific Trail, SBCTA has already awarded $100,000 for the project that cost about $450,000. And last week, a committee which I served on, I'm sorry, a committee I don't serve on, but it was approved and it'll go on to the board in November, the November Board meeting, which I'll be part of, is to award an additional $228,000 for the bridge replacement plan. So, I just want to note that to the City Council. Okay, Item C2, C3, and C4, C2, C2 and C3.
Yes, real quickly, Item C2 regarding the irreparable annexation agreement with J2 Express. For those members of the public that aren't aware, this is the property to the southeast corner of Mission and Central, a little bit below actually. I think it's south of the Earl Scheib establishment. They're putting a car wash there. I wanted to commend staff for the agreement. I've always been a big advocate even prior to being on council about either a full-on annexation or incremental acquisition, annexation of county property there into our sphere, into the city. I am fully in favor of this, so I was pleased to see that. If we have to do it piecemeal and even do it in this manner, kudos to staff, I'm fully in favor. Item C3, the agreement with Chaffee Joint Union High School District for a specialized law enforcement officer to be at Montclair High School. Thank you, Chaffee Joint, for your willingness to pony up the funds to help pay for the officer at the camp, at the school. I'm not sure for those of you that may have read in the paper recently, there is some increased gang activity in the area, in the region, and gangs are actively recruiting our youth at the high school level. And this is one deterrent that the city is engaging in to try to keep kids out of that lifestyle and stay on the right track, and I fully support that. So, I was pleased to see that in the, on the consent calendar as well. Item C4?
Stop right there because I have a, I have a conflict issue with that, C4. So, Item C3, just real fast, I know Chief Police, myself and the principal, we've talked about this and I appreciate the chief working this through. I know you, some of the staffing challenges, but you made it possible, so thank you very much. So, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask the City Council to approve the consent calendar with exception of Item C4, which is the Metro Honda Agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent calendar be adopted with the exclusion of Item C4.
I will second.
Okay, and let's take electronic vote. Okay, that item is approved, 5-0, so I will accuse myself, Item C4, hand the meeting over to Mr. Mayor Protemru.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is for the consider, to consider approval of an agreement, participation agreement actually, with Metro Honda Montclair, and the city is offering assistance in the amount of $375,000 towards design construction of a freeway reader sign. I'm trying to summarize a very long item here. And if, excuse me, if the item is set forth, we have certain obligations with Metro Honda and the dealership group properties that will be considered. Mr. Lopez, your question was?
Actually, no, it was a comment. This was actually one of the issues that when I first got on council, Mayor Dutre took me for about a five-and-a-half-hour, six-hour drive around town, and we discussed this issue about potentially having an electronic billboard sign put up in the city and we looked at potential areas along the 10 freeway to put it. We were looking at the MacArthur Park area, of course, residents may not have liked that area. I am glad to see that we have settled on this location with Metro Honda. I think it'd be advantageous for us to do so. Other cities have it, the City of Ontario has theirs at Central. I do know that one of our business owners here pays $20,000 a month to advertise on their billboard. I'm hoping we can switch them over when their contract or their agreement with the City of Ontario is done, they can come to ours and utilize this if that's possible. Don't think it might, might be, I guess, maybe not, because I think the dealership owns it, but nonetheless, the fact, the fact that we have one within the city, the fact that the city could utilize it for announcements of city functions and events, I think is a great idea. I'm glad to see it happening. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, if there's no further comment, I will move the item as presented, Item C4.
Do I hear a second? I'll second it for the purpose of the vote tonight. All in favor indicate, we have to have an electronic vote, that's right.
Okay, for Mr. Mayor Protem, if I may, just for a second, just for purposes of clarification, this is not for off-site advertising. This is only for the advertising of the auto dealerships' sales and for the city to use for advertising public relations information. So, the type of sign yours are looking at is still one under consideration, but this is not that sign.
Okay, so we may possibly yours have a second one? Great.
Yes. It's only the way I read this, for the dealer to use, and then if we want to promote, say, the Easter Fun Day or something like that.
Perfect.
That's my understanding, am I incorrect?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay.
Please, nonetheless.
So, can, the motion will be to consider approval of agreement 2165 with Metro Honda and the Montclair Dealership Group Properties. All those in favor indicate by saying, by your vote. Okay, motion passes. That brings us to item, the mayor will be back, so.
Okay, we'll start with communication, I believe. I'm sorry, you have a consent, a council workshop and, November 1st, I don't see any objections to so ordered, we'll have that council workshop. And then communications, we'll start with the, the birthday girl.
Marsha.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for your birthday wishes today, too. I just wanted to announce some upcoming holiday activities and programs that I want to make sure the community is aware of. We have our, and I want to invite all of you to attend our Outdoor Halloween Spooktacular. It's going to be held on Saturday, October 30th, from 5:00 to 9:00 at the Shark Park. For children 12 and under, don't forget to bring your trick-or-treat bag to collect all the candy you will win when playing the games. And for the rest of the family, be sure to bring your appetite to enjoy the delicious foods and desserts that will be available from our food trucks. A costume contest will also be held for children aged 12 and under for the scariest, cutest, and most unique costumes. There will be a special family category for two or more family members who dress in a themed costume. Games and contests will be held between 5:00 and 7:00, and then at 7:00 PM, we will show the movie Hocus Pocus, which is rated PG. Thank you to all our sponsors for this event, Montclair Place, Bertech, and the Women's Club of Montclair, and we hope to see all of you there. If you can believe it, we are getting into our holiday mode, too, for our holiday food and toy baskets. We will have those available again for families who live in Montclair and meet specific income guidelines. So, to be considered or to see if you qualify for a basket this year, you do need to complete an application and they'll be accepted by appointment. We ask that you schedule the appointment by contacting our Senior Recreation Specialist, Myra Cano, by this Friday. Her direct number is 909-625-9457, or you can go to our city website, and her email is also mcano@cityofmontclair.org. Our city website has more information about the program as well. And finally, our military banners, our applications for active-duty military who request a banner will be accepted online or by appointment through November 10th. The program provides a complimentary banner for those currently serving in the Armed Forces who live in Montclair or who graduated from Montclair High School, and banners can also be purchased for $200 for veterans who have been honorably discharged and reside in the city. Banners will be hung on our Montclair streets in early 2022. And again, that's available on our city website or by contacting Senior Recreation Specialist, Myra Cano. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney have nothing. City Manager?
I have no items.
Myself, I just want to announce that back at SBCTA again, SBCTA is going to fund about 10 bus benches here in Montclair, sites that currently don't have any benches, and obviously that's in cooperation with Amby Trans, so I just want to announce that. And that also needs to go to the board meeting in November for final approval. Couple of weeks ago, Congresswoman Torres was here in Montclair, she visited the senior lunch program, obviously we're still doing the outdoor drive-through, so she came on that date and she helped pass out the food to the seniors as they came through in their vehicles and she gave us a little certificate at the same time. And then finally, about two weeks ago as well, I attended the state of the county that was held at the Toyota Arena in the City of Ontario. Okay, I think I'll start with Councilmember Carissa Martinez.
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
You have nothing to say?
Nothing tonight.
Well, I, I know she's got a big date coming up on October 31st and I wish her well on her wedding vows. Oh, Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah, I just have one quick comment. I wanted to thank Chief Abels for the rotating, the children are crossing signs. They are, I've seen it on Benson, but now it's on Fremont and Orchard, and I think the first time I saw it, I was about a block and a half away and I was like, wow, that's glaring. And I think that's fabulous and I appreciate the fact that you're rotating it around to different school areas. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez.
Yes, in addition to the city's Halloween event on the 30th, Montclair Little League, October 29th, the day before, which is a Friday, will have their Field of Screams Halloween-themed event at Saratoga Park from 6:30 to 8:30. There will be booths and free candy, food, a costume contest, snow cones, not sure who thought of the snow cones on a cold night, but nonetheless, snow cones, food for sale, costume contest by division, so whatever division the kids are playing, but it's open to the public as well. We would love to have you there. For the 30th, Marsha, for the event, do you need help with volunteers still or you got it all taken care of?
We can always use volunteers.
What time are you starting to get set up?
We'll talk afterwards.
Okay, perfect. And then, real quickly, I just want to say thank you for, to this now former employee for 15 years of service with the Montclair Fire Department, that was Chris Jackson. Chris Jackson left us on October 15th. I'm not sure what his endeavors are for the future, but nonetheless, thank you, sir, for your many calls over the years and saving lives, especially running calls during the COVID pandemic. We're very grateful to you, sir. My hat is off to you. All God's best, Godspeed to you. And then a minor, well, not minor, but a direction to staff, if we could have perhaps If we could have, um, perhaps someone meet with Mr. Jose Perez, um, maybe Monica Staff. In front of the house there, there's pictures from residents. Uh, of course, all the parents talk amongst themselves. Uh, there's some, some unleveling and a dip in grass and, uh, kids, uh, possibly tripping, and they're afraid of twisted ankles or whatnot. I know there's discussion about maybe leveling it out, pulling out the root, and pulling out the landscaping and putting concrete to solve the problem. You could talk with that with residents of concern, but that, that could be addressed and be appreciated. With that, Mr. Mayor, I am done.
Yeah, and I want to encourage, uh, Mr. Perez to contact either the, some of the city clerk or the city manager's office, uh, to request that, uh, thing come out then. He is in the audience, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Just contact either the city clerk or the city manager for that. Mayor Protan Roux.
Yes, uh, Mayor Dutre and I did attend the Gold Line Meeting. They're held virtually. He represents SBCTI. I represent the city. The information is very good. We're still struggling, Claire Mont, Montclair. We understand that, but it's moving forward, and that's the important thing. As long as we keep moving forward, there's opportunity, and I have no doubt that we will see it completed through to Montclair. There's a tremendous amount of will. Earlier tonight, you did hear Dr. Lally indicate that he has boosters for Moderna vaccine if you are an at-risk category. I would encourage everybody to become inoculated. If I may do a very quick piece here, let's look at a virus. Seventy percent of those who get it never notice. Twenty-four percent get mild symptoms, and it takes lab testing to be sure what it was. Five percent become sick but recover with limited defects. One percent by age group, two to five percent of the death rate for children, fifteen to thirty percent for teens and young adults, twenty-five to seventy-five percent for adults. Has a three-to-sixteen day incubation period, and the best test location is the nose. I'm talking about polio. You will say, why polio? Well, the survivors from the five percent to the one percent are often paralyzed in one or more limbs. They have weak lungs and an impaired life. You may ask then, since polio has a ninety-nine percent survival rate, why obtain a vaccine for something with such a high level of survival? I can remember as a child getting it on a little sugar cube at my doctor's office. It's important to become inoculated for coronavirus. And to note along the same lines, we heard earlier today the passing of a statesman and a general, Colin Powell. I had an opportunity five, six years ago at National Association of Realtors Conference to meet Secretary Powell, and he was a very articulate and interesting individual. In fact, I have a book somewhere at home, and he signed it. It was indicated in the news that he was fully inoculated and part of the effects of coronavirus are what killed him. What the media isn't telling you and is starting to come out is Colin Powell had multiple myeloma, cancer of the blood cells. It's a death sentence. I know very little about it, except the fact that it took my mother. When you have multiple myeloma, you are immune compromised. No matter what you do, your immunity, your immune system isn't going to work. So, for anybody who says, well, Colin Powell was vaccinated, he died from the effects of coronavirus. Let's also consider the fact that he had a very, very aggressive form of cancer. I think tonight our thoughts will be with his family. We'll remember the good things he's done for this country. We'll also remember at times when he himself said, "Maybe I could have done better." Thank you.
Well, thank you. And, um, he also had Parkinson's disease, uh, Colin Powell, and, um, I think in nineteen ninety-six, he was encouraged to run for president, and he didn't run for president, and I believe the reason why he didn't run for president, 'cause he had too much integrity. So, with that, we will adjourn, um, but we have, uh, committee minutes in our packet, there's for, uh, three committees, and with that, we adjourn the meeting. Thank you.